Welcome to the City of Lemon Grove's regular city council meeting. I would like to remind everyone, please silence yourself phones. Thank you. City clerk, will you please call the roll of city council members to go on the record as in attendance?
Councilmember Snow?
Here.
Councilmember... Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember LeBaron absent. Mayor Proton Gastel?
Here.
Mayor Vasquez?
Here.
We have a corner of the council.
Thank you. I will ask Mayor Proton Gastel to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. Tonight we do not have any presentations, and so we will move forward to the general public comment portion of the meeting. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public may express their concerns not pertaining to items on the agenda tonight. Please note that according to state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker, or a topic may be brought to the city council before considering its being at a future date. Per Lemon Grove municipal code chapter ten point one four point one five zero, all remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium and to begin speaking. We do have a few speakers upstairs here, and so I will start with, from the Hammond, followed by Matt Trinsky.
I wanted to say that the bonfire was a way of success. And all because of our great public works team, they put it together, they ratted it, they tore it down, and it looked like no one was even ever there. They did such a great job. And so I think that union or not, they should get their raise because they do so much for us. They do. And so I have time. I want to say, without going into details, if any of you out there think that we should, that we would be better off as county and to lose our civic, you're wrong. Because I know the secrets, and I'm not sworn to secrecy. It would not be a good thing for us as a county instead of a city. And then, because we're so nice, we don't have to be nice to people that are purposely messing with us to make us angry, to record our anger. It's harassment. It should be considered criminal. All I'll do is drop the F-bomb. But they're going to mess with someone else that's going to have a die for a gun, and I'm just saying. It's the way it is. So knock it off.
Thank you. Next we have Matt Kushtinsky, followed by One for Green.
Good evening. My name is Max Trinsky. I represent the Askey Local 127, both the general and supervisory all bargaining units. First, I want to thank councilmembers Snow, Mendoza, and also Mayor Proton Gastel for your vote last council meeting with three percent retroactive. Our members are very appreciative of that vote. Thank you for the city. It will help them a little bit, especially during the holidays. So thank you. Next, I want to do a brief update on bargaining with the city. Just give my update. The union started with about eighty-four articles. We proposed the city, we did about eighty-four, and the city did about two articles. We're down to about forty-seven articles, with twenty-six from the city and about twenty-one that we still have on the table for us to respond to. There's been great progress between both sides. Keep in mind that articles are always the hardest at the end, especially the economic ones, which usually come later. It's normal bargaining. But we appreciate the city bargaining with us. Twenty-three minute update. There are some issues, of course, that we're going to have further debate about. And I'm not here to argue with you about it, but just let you know. Some things, just let you know where we're going to have concerns, like for example, the city has rejected straight out a staff labor management article. That usually allows for once, twice, three times, whatever during the year, the union and the city to sit down and talk about, not about agreements, about an individual person, but about issues that the union sees or the city sees that hopefully they can find resolution, not here at the dais and not in bargaining, but in a conversation. So that's an issue for us, I know. But hopefully we'll find a resolution with the city and find a labor management article. That's important for unions to have. Then also, they've allowed us to have bulletin boards, but they don't want to put that language in the contract. Doesn't quite make sense. But again, I think these are things that are low priority, except for the management one. I think we'll find consensus on that. Next, I just want to let you know there was some misinformation that was relayed last council meeting. I want to clarify this. First, there was a comment that the union was slow-walking this bargaining process, which referred bad faith. And that's a serious allegation. I spoke to the city's lead negotiator in fact. She does not think that I have, that I've been bargaining this contract since June, that I've never been slow-walking or bad faith bargaining in this. I know there's concerns about the very beginning, which always happens, but we've been bargaining in good faith, and I'm glad the city sees the same way. And we believe the city has been bargaining in good faith since we've been bargaining proposals. Next, there was a comment about expectations of a one-year wages-only proposal. As I told the mayor, we talked to her, that was not something that would be feasible. No union should ever accept a one-year first contract just about wages. It gives up all the basic union rights and agreements across the super presentation.
Thank you so very much. Next we have One for Green, and this will complete our public comment portion of the meeting.
Good evening. Good evening. I was still asking about baby home.
It needs to be closer to the mic.
Oh, okay. Also asked kind of about baby home, I just wanted to let you know that on Thanksgiving, it was pretty much quiet after about twenty-five minutes of hammering. Thanks to the city manager, he went out there and he got the fire. So that's good. But I had one more important question, because I could not, anything. They hit last time for three minutes. It is about days and operations, construction. I read somewhere before that the days were from Monday through Saturdays, from seven AM to seven PM. Then I read something that was complicated. And it was a figure of, just like this screenshot, on September nineteenth, about two. And it leaves as follows, for me to notice, that first, you have their schedule, municipal code, section eighteen point one eight point five six zero. Construction is limited to June, from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. This includes one month of compare arrival and departure of all equipment. No construction shall occur on Saturday, Sunday, a holiday designated by the city, without great information about the city. And my question for you all, who's got to, has, looking into this, is one of the correct days that they should be out there working? And should we be out there working on Saturdays? Or should we not? Like I said last time, all the other three major construction sites are closed on Saturday. But this one is not. And I think here's the idea, we can only carry one.
Thank you so very much. Next we have the consent. I have a couple more speakers left, and that is Dawn.
John Elwood. This is on health and fitness assessment services. I was just wondering. What this is all about. Yeah, just want to know what it's about. I understand it's health and fitness. But is it just somebody to help keep everything in order for the firefighters? Because they're for a fire chief. So that's all I'd like to know on that. If you could respond.
Thank you so very much. And so I will turn this over to the staff to see if we have any comments before we move on to the consent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members, and I'd like to note that Councilmember LeBaron is present on the dais. On the last comment that Mr. Woods made is about a consent item, and that really is to look at the health and fitness of our firefighters. It's not every year. This is just a new company. And what they do is they do blood work. They ensure that our firefighters are healthy. In the past, they have recognized blood pressure or early onset diabetes. So those are the health screenings that are done to ensure the fitness of our firefighters. Because our firefighters need to make sure that they are tip-top shape when they go out and help the public. Chief, is there anything else to add?
City Manager Romero. Yes, these are annual physicals. There are certain components that are required, especially because we are wearing self-contained breathing apparatus. So it's a comprehensive annual physical to make sure that our personnel are safe and in operating condition.
Thank you so very much. And we'll now move on to our consent calendar. And before I see if we have a motion, I believe that John Elwood wanted to make a comment regarding one of the agenda items, and so if you could approach the podium to provide your comment. Thank you.
John Elwood. First, there's a sign on Central says, "Commercial vehicles over three times prohibited." November twenty-ninth, a truck transport fully loaded with used tires went down the hill. It wasn't from Toyota, or two Toyota. November thirtieth, two dump trucks, one up the hill, one down the hill. December first, nine forty-five AM, concrete mixer truck, up the hill. December second, ten fifty AM, dump truck downhill. December fourth, dump truck down the hill. And then yesterday was fire truck, no. That's fine, because it's not a commercial vehicle, it's a government vehicle. On the new dispensary property, there's a trailer with a vehicle plus a motorcycle. And as a corner of Central and Federal, they've been there for about two weeks. Somebody has to do something about it. I can't do anything about it because it's not my property. I would have gone long time ago. And the creek needs to be cleared completely. Sixty-eight, forty-nine Federal Avenue, the sidewalk needs to be repaired. South side of Edco, eight four on Federal, sidewalk needs to be repaired. Both of those are water drops, stormwater drops. And there's about that much gap on the pops. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And what I want to do is note here on the record that when John spoke during public comment, his question was regarding item one D, which is the Health and Fitness Assessment Services. That is on the consent agenda. Staff did respond to your question, but that was taken care of during the public comment portion. And now that we're on consent, he just shared his public comments. And so staff has made a note of your comment, and we'll follow up with you, and I just wanted to clarify that on the record. And with that said, I'd like to see if we have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I have a question actually, about that agenda item, the additional benefits that firefighters would be receiving if we were to vote yes on that agenda item. Why? So this is adding, this is giving our firefighters more benefits than what they currently already have. And it's my understanding that as first responders, their health and safety is very important, however, they already have tons of benefits.
If you want to discuss, the item needs to be pulled from the consent calendar.
I'd like to ask that this be pulled from the consent calendar, because we're asking to give some interest group more benefits than what they are receiving.
Pull the consent agenda item one D by Councilmember LeBaron. Do we have a second? We do not have a second, so the motion fails. And with that said, I'd like to see if we have a motion for the consent calendar.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
We have a motion by Councilmember Snow, and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. I'll ask first to be heard. Call the wall.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Because a lot of these agenda items seem to really awkwardly and strangely cater to special interests, I'm going to be voting no on this. There's a lot of things that we should probably be discussing about how we're choosing to spend the public's money. It seems to be going strangely to very specific people, and we've never discussed this, because the public isn't benefited by any of this, so I'm going to be voting no. Definitely no.
Councilmember Mendoza?
I'm going to vote yes, because I think that Councilmember LeBaron needs to
I'm sorry, if you could turn on your mic, because we can't hear you. We have to push the top portion of the
I'm going to vote yes, and I'm going to suggest that Councilmember LeBaron actually read the staff report for the meeting, and then she may need to pull these items. You don't know that I have it, however you're actually, so you're Obviously, you haven't. I have. Because you don't understand it. This is granting our firefighters more benefits than what they already have, like as explained by our city manager just five minutes ago. No, you need to try to
There is a motion and a second. We're in the middle of a vote.
Thank you. Can we proceed?
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number two is the second reading of ordinance four six four to adopt new establishment regulations. And our city attorney, of course, is thinking to give the second reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This is the second reading of ordinance four six four to adopt new massage establishment regulations in the City of Lemon Grove. This item was originally considered and adopted without revision by a majority vote of the city council on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is the second reading of the proposed ordinance. And I will read the ordinance title now, which is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Lemon Grove, California, amending chapter eight point two zero Massage Therapy Practice Local Licensing, seventeen point one six point zero seven zero General Commercial Zone, seventeen point two four point oh nine oh Nonconforming Uses Structures and Lobs, and chapter eighteen point twenty-eight Adult Entertainment of the Lemon Grove Municipal Code, related to massage establishments. So the motion, recommended motion is to accept the second reading of ordinance four six four to adopt new massage establishment regulations in the City of Lemon Grove. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I'll check with our city clerk to see if we have any speakers left for this particular item.
Madam Mayor, I have no speakers left on this item.
Thank you so very much. As this is the second reading for this item, this is our opportunity to make a motion to approve, and so I'll check to see if we have a motion. Councilmember LeBaron, I'll motion to approve adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number three is the award of contract, first well, number zero one zero five two one dash L C S. Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for the purchase and installation of playground equipment. I'll turn this over to Izzy Mardea, who is our public works director, to present the staff report.
That's one chief. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item for this evening is a recommendation to award contract to Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for the purchase and installation of playground equipment for Lemon Grove Park. Next slide, please. The funding for this project mostly comes from Proposition sixty-eight, which is the California Drought Water Parks Climate Coastal Protection and Outdoor Access For All Act of twenty eighteen. This act was signed in twenty seventeen and focuses on preserving environmental resources and improving quality of living throughout the state. One aspect of the act, or one program of the act, is the State Parks Per Capita Program, which funds park rehabilitation, creation, and improvement grants to local governments on a per capita basis. In twenty twenty-one, staff prepared an application, a funding application, and presented it before the city council, which was approved in November, I think it's November second of twenty twenty-one, allowing staff to submit an application to the State Parks Department, which was subsequently approved in January of twenty twenty-two. The city was awarded a hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars, which is the program for playground equipment at Lemon Grove Park. Next slide, please. Lemon Grove Park, which is located at twenty-two seventy-one Washington Street, has a play as a play area, playground area, that consists of a play area of five to, I'm sorry, two to five years, five years old, which is the picture in the center. On the left-hand side is a play area ages five to twelve. And the park also, the play area also includes a two-swing set, swing set. The playground, so all this encompasses the playground. All the play areas within the park are approximately twenty years old and have exceeded their useful life. The city is experiencing costly repairs. When you're booking a repair of certain sections, the manufacturer no longer sells or offers that particular part, which requires staff to remove that playground aspect offline. Hence, staff is seeking utilizing these funds to upgrade the equipment at this park. Next slide, please. The proposed playground upgrades that staff is considering is entirely new play area for the ages two to five and five to twelve years old. This includes new climbers, new slides, new sensory ground equipment, a new swing set, which currently there's a two-seat swing set. And under the new design, we will be providing six seats, which I will discuss here in a bit. Additionally, with the design, is an integrated shade structure that is included in each of the individual play areas, and new safety surfacing, which is our wood fiber, which is our preferred method for ADA safety purposes. So when we were looking at our design, there was two options, which was a refresh option, which is essentially utilizing the existing current posts and piers, or completely renew posts and piers. And with this new design, we're looking at completely new posts and piers, which essentially means we're not limited to what we can use that space for. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides are a couple of renderings of the new playground. At the forefront, you'll see is the play area for the ages of five to twelve. So you see the net climbers, new slides, both on the right and left-hand side of the base structure. The two-to-five-year-old play area that you see in the back right-hand corner also includes some climbers, new slides. On the left and right new slides. On the left and right-hand side of the screen, they're built by, you know, play panels essentially, and they're essentially sensory play equipment. They provide visual hearing and touch sensory equipment for children. And as you can see in the picture, the integrated shade structures are included on top of or incorporated as part of the play area. Staff looked at, staff looked at the shade structures that essentially, you know, a canopy that would cover the entire playground area. That proved to be cost prohibitive. It was about a hundred thousand dollars just for that one entire shade structure, obviously due to the work of installing deep piers and foundations for those posts was, really drove up the cost. So putting together the, or incorporating the integrated shade structures was a more cost reasonable method for this design. Next slide, please. It's just a different perspective of the play area. One of the neat things that we incorporated was a shade structure on the slide, swing set, excuse me, which you typically don't see in a lot of play equipment. Next slide. One of the key features of the differentiating factors under the new design and what's currently there is, you know, with the new design, we're incorporating additional swing seats, which is taking, where currently there is a track slide, and so that will be removed, and instead of that, we'll be increasing the number of swings. Next slide, please. And one of the cool features that with this design is a, both an inclusive and generation swing seat versus the inclusive swing, which is on the left-hand side. This swing is ADA approved. It includes a three-point harness and essentially gives kids of all abilities the opportunity to engage in swinging, which is a valuable sensory play feature for children. On the right-hand side is a generation swing seat, and this essentially allows parents, grandparents, or older children to swing face-to-face with, you know, with the child or the toddler all in one, so everyone can join in on the fun. And so those are the two new, two features which we currently don't have in the city, and feedback that we've received over the year about including inclusive swings, we've taken that feedback and incorporated it with this design. Next slide, please. For the, with the grant funding, we're recommending that the city utilize a cooperative purchasing contract, which is allowed under municipal code under section three point two four zero nine zero, which allows for the purchase of goods and services from a cooperative purchasing program from agencies that have competitively procured goods and services. So this contract, which is available through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract, is available to the city. Other cities in California that have utilized this contract include the city of Escudero, Tenecula, Placentia, Torrance, Fontana, Oceanside, Ina Point of Vern, and Chino. And essentially, it's, for lack of better words, kind of like a design-build type of process, allows a manufacturer, who's the specialist in designing and manufacturing equipment, to also install it as well. Next slide, please. The project timeline for this project is, is on this slide here. Essentially, the longest lead time is the manufacturing of the equipment itself. There's a ten to twelve week lead time. You know, if council approves the item this evening, we would send the contract to the vendor, get it signed and executed, and then have them, have a purchase order cut to them, so that would begin the manufacturing process. That just takes us to approximately March, and we have built in a four-week timeframe for mobilization, essentially coordinating with the city and the vendor, ensuring that we communicate with the public, the park closure, allowing the vendor a spot to, a lay-down area to bring in that equipment and ensure that the installation process goes as quickly as possible. The installation lead time is about four weeks, and with this grant, we have a project or grant closeout that's due at the end of June, June thirty-third of twenty twenty-four. And so we reserve four weeks for, you know, the closeout documentation for that process. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution to award a contract, source well number zero one zero five two one dash L T S for the purchase and installation of playground equipment to Miracle Recreation Equipment Company at the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents. I'd be to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Thank you so very much for the presentation. I do have one speakers list here, and it is done, Elwood.
You know, Elwood, he explained everything that I needed to know, kind of.
Thank you so very much. I will do two rounds of questions, and I'll start with Councilmember Linoza, and it's two questions per council member.
Well, first of all, this is great. I have a grandson who's six, and he's frequently likes to be in the playground in Lemon Grove, so he'll be very excited by the new playground in the city, because ours are a little sad compared to other cities. So I'm really, I'll be using this, and I'm really excited that we're making some changes. So the wood fiber, is that the same as what we pretty much have now at Erie Street and Lemon Grove?
That is correct.
Okay. Did we look into what it would cost to put that, oh, it's kind of a rubberized material, you know? Would that have been cost prohibitive?
Yes, it would have. It's, it would have added about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. It's a rubberized corded product. Frankly, I'm not a fan of that product. It is a very difficult product to maintain. It deteriorates over time. It's difficult to replace certain sections of it. You know, unfortunately, with our parks, we do experience a lot of graffiti. If the rubber gets graffiti, it's just a maintenance nightmare.
Yeah, my only experience with it has been in, I don't know, every bit of the choice view park, the new one, and so far, it's still, it's still in shape, but yeah, I don't know what it would have added because of the cost.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Laverne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, well, I think it's great, but I love children. I love parks. The public loves children and loves parks as well. That's most important. So I think that this is going to make the public very, very happy to see that improvements to the parks are being considered. That's a good thing. Questions, because aside from being emotional, right, being happy, there's the part of me that as a council member, it needs to be logical, right? We're tasked with being logical, not making decisions based on emotions, but using logic and managing the public's money well, making sure it's being managed properly. So question, and I think, I don't know if it'll be you, Izzy, or Lydia, who is best suited to answer this question. So I suppose I'll pose it to both of you. Somewhere between twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, city council voted yes to approve using, it was either general funds or reserve funds, to buy playground equipment for our parks. And if my memory serves me right, we voted to grant the city manager the authority to withdraw, I want to say it was over eighty thousand dollars, from the public's bank account to buy that park equipment. Today, city staff is asking for more money for playground equipment. So I'd like to know what happened with the playground money that we already approved in the past?
Ms. Laverne, I have to go back and research it. It's several years back, and so I'd have to take a look. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, so, okay. I hope I'm not the only person that thinks that that's a little odd that we already, so now this is speaking to logic. So we already approved thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to buy playground equipment for the same playgrounds that we are discussing today. And like I said, if this is if my memory serves me well, I want to say it was over eighty thousand dollars. It very well could be way more than that. So logically, right, we already voted yes to give our city manager the power and authority to draft up documentations, to draft documents that she then takes to the bank, to then allow her to withdraw these funds from the public's coffers to then purchase these things, right? To the tune of, it's not ten dollars. This is lots of, lots of, lots of money. And we can't even recall what we did with that lump sum of cash that we have already given one person the authority to use, and now we are voting to release another two hundred and something thousand dollars to buy the same thing. I think that that's very odd. I don't think that that's responsible, and I'm inclined to think that I'm not even comfortable. It's like if somebody said, well, I, it's like if I already gave somebody five hundred dollars to go buy me a lawnmower at Home Depot, and then they're asking me for another five hundred dollars to buy the same exact lawnmower two years later, and then I ask them, well, hold on, wait, what happened to the five hundred dollars that I gave you to buy the lawnmower two years ago, and you never bought the lawnmower? What happened to that? What's going on? I don't feel very confident giving more money to something that we have actually already voted on, per like the facts, data, and what's written down and documented. I just want to throw that out there. We're using logic, right? This all kind of seems a little bit strange, especially that such a large amount of cash, and you can't even recall. I mean, can any of us from city staff recall? And now we're asking for more for the same thing? Efficiency, guys, we got to think. We're tasked with making decisions about how the city is being ran, and we're not, doesn't seem like we're managing, managing the public's funds very well. And then double this to add this, I just want, so the public knows where I'm going with this, what kind of framework I'm in. We get audits that say that there is not proper documentation about how we are spending our funds. So we already voted yes on a blank check to grant people at city hall the authority to use thousands and thousands of dollars, and now we're about to sign, to vote, to sign another blank check? That's weird, very weird.
Councilmember Laverne, we hear you, but we need to know exactly what you're talking about. What within the item are you referencing so that our city manager can do the research on that agenda item? We have a very important topic here tonight, and we want to get through the questions and allow everyone to speak. And so I will ask you to ask your question so that we can continue on. But if you can state on the record which agenda item you're referencing, and the amount of money that you're referencing, so that staff may provide a response. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if this slipped past anybody. I am talking about the agenda item right now, this playground money, and I am asking a question that has to do with playground money that we have already voted yes on, and how it seems like we are double charging for the same playground equipment. And that's to clarify.
Can you tell us which agenda item where we voted yes? Can you tell us where that item is when, when we voted on that item, so that staff may provide a response to your point?
Okay. So I don't have a full time on at city hall, Madam Mayor. That is the city manager's attorney. That's why he's compensated, the lady's not compensated. This gentleman right here works at city hall full-time, which is why he's compensated what he's compensated. None of us up here are tasked or expected to remember the exact agenda item of something that we voted on. However, since you're asking that, I'm going to put that back on our city staff, who are paid the big bucks to know that kind of information. So Lydia, please, let me get the exact agenda item for when we voted. It was sometime between twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, when city council voted to approve spending upwards of fifty thousand dollars on playground equipment that we are now asking again to spend money on. My question remains, what did we choose with the money that we already voted on, and why are we asking for more money for the exact same playground equipment? Thank you. That's all. I'm going to do a, what.
Stop the madness. Too much.
Okay, so while we do not know what agenda item is being referenced by the council member, I just want to, I want to find out, besides that question, is there another question that you have so that we can continue on, and eventually, hopefully, we'll be able to have a response to that question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For now, that would be something that's very important for me to have answered before I can make a, I would need to know the answer to that before I move forward with me making any decision, or not. I suppose that would guide my decision. But yeah, that's my only question for right now. It's a very important one. Yes, thank you.
And so your questioning and allocation of eighty thousand dollars based on a previous agenda item that was approved, but you do not know which agenda item?
To correct what you're saying, actually, I'm going to repeat what I said. Somewhere between twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, council voted yes to approve using either general funds or reserve funds to buy playground equipment for our parks. If my memory serves me well, we voted to grant the city manager the authority to withdraw over eighty thousand dollars from the public's bank account. Mind you, this is if my memory serves me well. So the number may not be accurate. However, we did vote yes to approve funds to buy playground equipment. That's the larger picture. Let's focus on that. To buy the equipment. Today, city staff is asking for more money for playground equipment. I'd just like to know what happened with the playground money from before. And that's my question.
For the record, you do not know the agenda item?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do not know the agenda item. Wasn't labeled at that time. Okay, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so our city manager is looking into that right now. In the meantime, what I will do is I will move on to councilmembers now.
Vote yes on playground equipment? Vote yes on playground equipment? So I wouldn't expect it to be too difficult for city staff to find? Um, maybe someone from our public works? Because it's not every day that we vote on playground equipment, something that's a really great thing.
Or I will say this, um, we do want, one second, we do want to get through this agenda item.
Yes.
And, um, your comments are acknowledged. And, uh, staff is looking into that. And so now I will move on to council members' note. Thank you.
Okay, so I've been doing this, I'm almost at my year mark now. And there are certain things that you do before you come to this meeting. Um, and we get a staff packet that explains to us all the information, all the details. Then if we have questions, we can go to city staff. So I go to city staff and I ask all of my questions and I give them a heads up of where my concerns are and what my issues are. That's the part of my job to do my own due diligence. And so a lot of the questions here today convince, show, demonstrate that somebody hasn't done their homework and hasn't done the hard work it takes to do this job up here. Whether or not we're paid full-time staff, we have a responsibility. We were voted to make sure we do our homework before we get to this meeting. We work with our staff to make sure that they understand exactly what it is and where our concerns are so that when we come before you and sit on this dais, we can give you the most information possible. Then you have access to the information that will help you understand how we come to our conclusions. And so one of the issues, like, one of the things that makes it readily apparent is that the source of these funds comes from Prop 68, Per-Capita Grant Program. They're not coming here asking us for two hundred thousand dollars for playground equipment. Our wonderful city staff have managed to go out and secure a grant for almost two hundred thousand dollars. That's what's funding this program. That's why we get to have such cool equipment for our kids to play on. One of the great advantages about this new playground set that they're proposing is it has accessibility so that all of our children can be able to play on this. And so Izzy, one of my questions to you is, what about these new proposed procedures will allow our children who have special needs to be able to more fully participate, be integrated into this playground system?
So to answer your question, the, um, both the play areas are ADA compliant. There's a difference between ADA compliant and like an all-inclusive playground. Um, all-inclusive playgrounds are, there are very few of them in the area, but essentially, um, an all-inclusive playground consists of long ramps to be able to get up into the play area and be able to share accessible. Um, while this is ADA compliant, it's not an all-inclusive playground. You know, we don't have the space for an all-inclusive playground. That's just not the design that we selected for this section of this playground here. That's my response to your question.
Okay, so we have a new swing set that helps families be able to play that might not normally be able to play on a swing set?
Correct, so currently our swing set at the playground, it's a box swing. So it's typical, what you think of a swing, um, is what's currently there. Um, so kids with special needs, um, can't utilize the swing set.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to take a brief five-minute recess so that our city clerk can reset the system. So five minutes.
Do you want to step aside?
Yes.
Testing one-two? Testing one-two? Testing one-two?
Uh, thank you so very much. We will now return, um, to our city council meeting. And, um, Allison Snow, our council member, uh, she has some questions. I just want to make sure that you ask your questions so that we can move on to the next person, who's Mayor Popeye Gasol.
Thank you, there it is, okay. Thank you, yeah, I'm, um, I'm looking, I'm looking at the background and it says that in November of 2021, that a little over two years ago, we applied for funding for playground equipment. And in January 2022, um, we received funding, um, and that, you know, that was almost two years ago. So I think that, um, I, the only memory I have discussing playground equipment, at least for this park, is that is, uh, two years ago. And, and, you know, it was quite, it was quite a while back. So I have two questions and they're sort of, can you help me understand kind of questions? Um, it, two years is a significant time, though I've been in local government long enough to know that, that the really good things take more like ten years. So, so I'm not criticizing anything, um, I'm sort of used to it. But two years is a significant time. Um, and, 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 and the cost over two hundred thousand dollars um, is an awful lot. Um, although I have to admit, I have not priced playground equipment lately. Um, do you think you could say a, um, say a little bit about, um, why a project like this, it gives you two years? And, and, and why, um, uh, two hundred thousand dollars? And I'm not worried about the fact that it's more than one hundred ninety-four because it's hard to get leaves and magic exactly. But maybe a little bit of commentary on, on what, you switch places, it throws me off. I think they're different people. Um, uh, a little bit of commentary on why two years and why two hundred thousand dollars? A little bit of education might help.
Certainly, council member. The, the duration is essentially due to, um, staffing vacancies so that the, um, you know, with the passing of a previous staff member uh, who really took the lead in, in the grant administration for this project and the departure of my predecessor, uh, in March, April of last year, really put the project on hold for several months. Um, and when I got here, September of 2022, this was, uh, on the priority list. And, um, and so getting caught up, you know, uh, essentially, you know, staffing. Uh, when it refers to, to cost of playground and playground equipment, uh, yeah, playground equipment is pretty costly. You know, the features of, uh, the integrated shade structures, um, adds a certain element or adds to the costs additionally. Uh, as part of this design is, uh, you know, a new, uh, new wood fiber resurfacing, uh, which adds approximately, you know, five to seven thousand dollars to the project. Um, but that's required because they have to remove what's currently there to, to get to the foundations of the posts and refore, um, and, and so, um, you know, wood fiber has to be a certain depth, uh, for ADA purposes. And, uh, you know, when you look at your overall design, um, you know, we have two different play areas. So you, you essentially have two playgrounds in one space. You have the, the two to five-year-old age playground set and you have the five to twelve. Um, the additional features that you add, it adds to the costs. Um, obviously, um, not obviously, but more, if you integrate more slides, that equals more pieces, drives up the costs. So, uh, in playing with our allocated funding amount with the design, we worked with the designer to, um, uh, our previous staff because we took what was there and tweaked it a little bit to fit our, our budget constraints. Um, uh, but we, we worked with the designer to include features that would best fit our budget and also make it, um, uh, attractable or usable for, for all ages.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And, um, I am pleased to see this project on the agenda tonight. But to know that grant funding, um, will be utilized to refresh, renew and re-energize, uh, park play space and very much part is, um, commendable. So, um, you know, I know this is going to be a nice investment, uh, not only in a play space for youth, but also, uh, those who are just a little older too, so that's new. Um, and you have one question regarding the anticipated lifespan of the new equipment. Uh, if you could just, um, give me an idea of the anticipated lifespan and, um, maintenance, anticipated maintenance that may be required?
So lifespan, uh, ten to twelve years. Uh, we selected pieces that were durable, from high-grade plastics. Some of the features include some climbers where there's kind of cable features as opposed to, I think, one option was rope. And I can see rope being cut and more easily destroyed. So with, you know, the, the maintenance, the day-to-day maintenance should be relatively low. Again, because we selected features that were low in maintenance costs. Certainly, if, if, if there was a piece or selected, or a, you know, piece that, for whatever reason, due to not wear and tear, the, the playground is covered under warranty, I believe for two years. So that would, that would be covered.
I think you, and the 10 to 12-year anticipated lifespan, does that include the shade day cover, coverage as well?
Yes.
I thank you so very much. I will begin with the second round of questions. Oh, and we'll allow, before we get started with the second round, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Brittany Romero, to provide comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So quickly, I'm glad for the break. I looked at the agenda reports and it looks like in March of, March 2nd, 2021, city council meeting, there was an item to approve and install park, park playground equipment. The amount was, the staff had requested, was a total project cost of $18,000. And that project cost, as I'm reading the staff report, was spread between Berry Street Park and Lemon Grove Park. And for Berry Street Park, it was repair torn, sick shade sails, glider assembly broken, missing labels and warning stickers, warning bearings, broken park equipment, and then exposed metal and peeling rubber on several benches. So it went to, so it went to repair and replacement of existing equipment, not new equipment. And then at Lemon Grove Park, it was access stairs, peeling rubber exposed on the metal surface on some of the playground equipment. Glider assembly was broke, the play area hoods were cracked and broken, there was a worn climber that was missing railings in parks, transfer points of three decks which exposed metal, and identification labels missing or faded, including warning labels, and then the drop zones not marked. So all of that was existing playground equipment. It was to repair what was there because it was broken and it exposed a huge risk hazard. Also later that year, in, in June of 2021, staff had requested $18,000 for Promenade Park to repair the ballers that were broken because cars were continually driving onto the Promenade Park. And then we were asked for restroom repairs at the same meeting agenda for Lemon Grove Park and Berry Street Park at $27,000. And then in October 5th of that year, that work. And then lastly, in December, we, the city council allotted.
You said October 5th.
No, October 5th, yes. The council allotted, we'll be right next. The city council allotted about $38,000 to repair and expand the Berry, Berry Street Park walking trail. And that's, that's all I found in those two years, very quick research on what we, we did for parks.
Thank you so much for providing that clarity regarding the expenditures for parks. So from what I can see, it's all maintenance and repair, but no funding provided for the purchase of brand-new equipment.
That's correct. We are replacing and repairing the equipment that currently existed. Later that year, as Mayor Protem Gastel pointed out, we came forward with a grant to do a full repair, the replacement of all of the equipment, because again, it's old and dated, and we wanted to have new equipment for.
Thank you so very much for providing that clarity. Now, we will begin the second round, and I'll start with council member Mendoza. Two questions, please.
I, I don't have any more questions, but I just did want to reiterate that I, I recall the discussion, and I'm looking at the agenda item from November 2 of 2021, where we approved the application for this grant and looked at playground equipment for Lemon Grove Park. New playground equipment is part of the, they're showing the old playground equipment and, you know, what we could do with the grant for the new playground equipment. So I, I think that that is, I'm, I'm not going to second guess her, but I believe that's probably what council member Loparren is remembering. And I remember being disappointed that we weren't also able to do the same thing at Berry Street Park, because that's closer to my house. But I do recall, you know, this discussion about increasing the number of parks. And so, yeah, it's been two years and, and here we are actually getting it done. Yay.
Thank you, Councilmember Loparren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff's response actually makes me even more concerned. I just want everybody to know that. And my colleague here says I'm not going to second guess what staff has said. It's not our job. I, I want to say that that's scary in itself, just hearing that, because we're not one in the same as city staff. We are here to second guess.
I'm not going to second guess you.
Oh, pardon. I misunderstood. Okay. Well, then I'll just continue with what I was saying. I am here to second guess what's said. And actually, I want to say that what, Lydia, with all due respect, thank you so much for searching in the very short time that you had. I don't believe that your response does provide total clarity. And like you admitted, you did a very quick glance in search. If we play back the audio, that's your words, "quick glance in search." So this is by no means providing any sort of reassurance that we did not already vote on this. I have very vivid recollection of watching a PowerPoint presentation, and I believe that the funds had to do with like Berry Street Park. I could definitely remember Berry Street Park. It could have been also Lemon Grove Park, which is on Washington Street. But I have very vivid recollection of, there was a slideshow presentation of this. And I want to say I remember Councilmember Mendoza saying, just how she was saying today that she's going to use the park and she, she lives by it and she's going to use it, take her grandson, saying the same thing back then. And me being very happy, just like I am today that we're talking about park, I'm very happy. So I was very happy then. And I have very vivid recollection, because I don't know if everybody is aware, I, I watch over the public's money, like, a lot. I always ask questions about how we're spending our money, how we're managing our money. And I want to say I even sent now, because this is all your response, Ms. Romero, just makes me more concerned. One, because it seems like there's an attempt to deflect, to focus on my delivery of what I'm saying, to focus on who's prepared, who, who people think are not prepared, versus focusing on the very pointed question that I made, which was what happened to the money? I believe that we already voted to release funds for park equipment. And versus trying to focus and find, when did we make that vote? So that we can clarify that. Because like I said, my memory may be wrong. I might be wrong, at which point I will apologize profusely. I'll say, oh, like I said, disclaimer, I said if my memory serves me right, however, nowhere are we doing that? Nowhere are we focusing on my question. Where's our money? What happened to the money? Instead, we're deflecting on whatever, my delivery, whether people think I'm prepared or not. That has nothing to do, that has nothing to do, where's our money? I'm asking a very pointed question. Where's the public's money? Where is the public's money? And when people try to deflect from that and they tiptoe around that and throw out non sequiturs and red herrings, that's usually an indicator of there's deception, or that something's not just right. That's why we're trying to deflect from a very simple thing. Where's the money? So that said, I also want to go back to this, because I do have a question. You just pointed out some things. None of what you said, March 2nd, 2021, council approved playground equipment at $18,000 at Berry Street Park? That's a small little thing. I want to wager that was probably on the consent calendar, I'm getting there in just a second, which is not what I'm referring to. We did, if my memory serves me right, we did vote to release a lot of funds, not $18,000. June, June of 2021, $18,000 for Promenade Park, that has nothing to do with what I recall. That's Promenade Park is that little section right next to the trolley station from Ballers. That's a little pillar. Nothing to do with my recollection of the money that we spent. That's, these are just little fluff things that I kind of feel like are being tossed out to deflect from what I'm trying to get at. And October 5th, 2021, $38,000 to repair and expand Berry Street Park walking path, has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. I have vivid recollections of seeing a structure with a little camp, the same thing that we're doing now, was on this screen right here. So that has nothing to do with the walking path. So none of those little things that you, you know, found in your quick glance in search are speaking to what I'm getting at. So I'm gonna, now I want to buckle down on this. So obviously, I'm not going to get to this right now, but I just want everybody to know that moving forward, I am going to, because I want to say I did send, I have sent emails, because I've always wondered, what happened to that money? How come the parks, I have a child myself. My child uses these parks. So this is why I know this very intimately, as well, I want to throw that in there. What has happened to the funds? Because when I have taken my daughter to the parks since, the playground equipment is graffitied, it's, it's, I mean, it's messed up, you know? It's scratched, it's, it's not right. And I remember that I have voted yes on spending money on those things. So I, as a mother and person who utilizes these parks, have always remembered what happened, or wondered what happened to the money that we voted for. If my memory serves me right. So I want to say that I've either drafted an email, I should have already sent, I'm pretty sure, it's either in my drafts, or I have sent the city manager an email asking what has happened to this, the money that we voted yes on for park equipment. And I'm just letting everybody know, I, I'm not going to leave this, I'm going to follow through with this. I'm buckling down on this one, because I think the response I'm getting here and the reaction from everybody is quite concerning to me. And then I'll, I'll be reporting out to the public what comes of that. And I will find the agenda item in the day, I will try to find what happened. And if I am mistaken, I will absolutely say, I am sorry, I was mistaken. I guess we never did vote on funds for park playground equipment. But until that time, I remain thinking that it's very suspicious and odd to get the response that I'm getting from staff about playground equipment. Yeah, I'll just say that for the record. Thank you. No questions, or no further questions. Yeah, no further questions. So I just want to, again, restate what's already stated by Mayor Protem Gastel. In November 2nd of 2021, staff came to the city council to get approval to submit the app, to submit the grant that we're talking about today, for the play equipment at Lemon Grove Park, that the council will be approving today. We had to get pre-approval from the city council, because that is a requirement of the state. And I did look at that agenda report, and there was a full PowerPoint presentation, but there was no money allocated. It was just approval for the grant. The only money allocated for parks in '21 and in '22 was what I listed. Staff didn't get any allocation for brand-new equipment at any of the parks. We were using grant money for brand-new equipment. That, so you're probably recollecting the grant application process, not an allocation of money.
And happened on November 2nd of 2021?
Yes.
Okay. Granted that, thank you so very much. We will now move on to council member Snow.
I just wanted to highlight some of the other really cool features about this park. We just had the opportunity to enjoy the bonfire. It was so well-attended. We have so many people there, all generations. And it can show what happens when we create a beautiful, vital space for people to get together and recreate. And so this is a really exciting opportunity. One of the other features that I was impressed with on this was the shade structures. As someone who's very sensitive to the sun, I appreciate that, that this was done with thinking of public safety in mind. Can you highlight, Izzy, some of the public safety and physical safety elements of this project?
So the, as you mentioned, the shade structure is health and wellness is, is one. Five bar, the five bar, the, which of five bars is another safety element? The play equipment has to meet strict compliance specifications from the, essentially a third-party association. And this manufacturer does meet all those, or has those credentials for its play equipment. And as far as safety, other safety features, when you, when you, when you design a playground, you have to have certain distances. Essentially, play areas can't be, they have to be a certain feet away from each other, from the playset, from other play areas, from integrated sensory ground-level equipment. And so all those features that we have with this design are safely, are within the safely allowable space. And also maximizes the, the space there. And those are the ones that I can think of a lot, yeah.
Thank you for that. And I just wanted to reiterate that the, the funding for this comes from a grant specifically for new equipment. And we have never applied for new equipment for the Lemon Grove Park, which I always call the Washington Street. But for this park before, and this isn't double-dipping a fund's head or, or anything like that.
Yeah. And if I may, just going back to the safety features, when we were picking out specific products, we were looking at, looking at some of the products from a risk standpoint, which products would probably have maybe the least amount of injuries. And so, I mean, we took that into consideration as well, you know, for example, height, there's three-story level height, playgrounds, rock climbing walls, things, things like that. And so, you know, we picked the various products here for this design with risk liability in perspective.
As a lawyer, I can really appreciate that. As a mother of children who'd like to do part four, I really, really appreciate that. Helping them navigate themselves is, is great. So I, I feel really assured that this money is coming from a grant. I think it's a great achievement that we were able to secure this funding. And I'm very excited to participate in the ribbon cutting for this event.
Thank you so very much. And Mayor Protem Gastel?
I, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you so very much. And I was looking here at the drawing on the PowerPoint slide. And what I appreciate most here is the areas that have features that focus in on those who are toddlers. I guess you call them ground features. And so it's really. And so it's really great to see those incorporated, uh, into this place space. I'll tell you, I'm really proud of city staff. One, to go out and seek the funding to meet the needs of our community. But also knowing that we are, um, a little park challenge, knowing that we can give this a refresh, um, so that everyone can enjoy is commendable. So I just wanted to, again, thank staff for that. But also, we know that, uh, parks are not only a place where kids go and play, it's a place where families can gather. And to know that there is brand new, fresh equipment for everyone to enjoy, um, makes me smile. And so thank you. I'm ready to go ahead and approve this agenda item, uh, so that staff can get to work and, um, put all of the measures in place so that we can move forward, uh, with refreshing our park next year. And so, um, with that said, I'd like to know if we have a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution to award a contract, source will number zero one zero five two one dash L T S for the purchase and installation of playground equipment to Miracle Recreation Equipment Company in the amount of two hundred twelve thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents, and to authorize the city manager to execute any necessary document.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, I'll ask her to refer to all the law.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, I'm still a little unsettled and I just want to err on the side of caution. So I'll be voting no tonight, however, I hope everything is okay and our community can get in park equipment soon. Thank you.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, item number four. Item number four is the Mayor Pro Tem rotation for calendar year 2024. And I'll turn this over to the mayor, our city manager, to present the staff report. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm making this relatively quick so we don't run into the, can you address this twice, please? Hey, thank you. In two thousand and six, the city council adopted Resolution 2649. And Resolution 2649 governs the rotation of the Mayor Pro Tem. This year, the Mayor Pro Tem rotation is as follows. Is, um, Councilmember Jennifer Mendoza will serve as Mayor Pro Tem from December 19th to December of 2024, um, I think it's December 17th of 2024. Councilmember Snow will serve as Mayor Pro Tem from December 24th to December 25th. And Councilmember LeBaron will, um, serve as Mayor Pro Tem in December 2025 to December 2026. By the resolution, we're required to do the rotation of those members that are present on the council board. This will change next year, um, based on the results of the election. And staff recommends, um, I mean, this is sidebar. Staff recommends the approval of the rotation calendar, um, for, uh, uh, calendar year 2024. And, um, to appoint Councilmember Jennifer Mendoza as the Mayor Pro Tem uh, from December 2019, 2023 to December 17th, 2024. And that completes staff's report. Thank you so very much. Um, we do have one speaker slot for this agenda item, John Elwood.
John Elwood. From what I recall, Leanna has never been a Mayor Pro Tem. She got skipped over, uh, I believe, by Mr. Jones when he got this last time. Prior to that, it was, uh, George, no, it was Jennifer, Jennifer's, George, he got it. But, uh, like I said, I believe that Leanna was skipped over on your last cycle, or what you want to call it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you so very much. We do not have any additional speaker slots. And so I will start with my first round of questions, um, two questions max, starting with, uh, Councilmember Mendoza.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Councilmember LeBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I want to say thank you to President John Elwood for his comment. Just to clarify, yes, I was skipped for Mayor Pro Tem. However, all of us were elected by the people and irregardless of whether we're called mayor, mayor pro tem, council member, all of our voices weigh the same. And, um, I don't know, I feel like I serve with pride. I do not need the title of mayor or mayor pro tem to dictate how I operate as a council member and how I serve the public, so. Yeah, I'll be happy to, with whatever the majority wants, because in the end, it doesn't affect how I serve at all.
Thank you, Councilmember Snow.
Um, no questions, and I would move that we adopt the resolution confirming the rotation of Councilmember Jennifer Mendoza to serve as Mayor Pro Tem commencing December 19th, 2023.
We have a motion and a second, I will continue, um, with, with, um, Mayor Pro Tem Gastel.
If it's okay, um, I'll skip the question but make a comment on the motion. Okay. I've enjoyed serving as Mayor Pro Tem. And I, and I think people will recall the, the meeting that I ran was the shortest and one of the most pleasant. Yeah, it's been quite an honor. And, and I also want to say that I think that, that it would be great to have Jennifer, uh, uh, take over as, as Pro Tem. And thank you, thank you for the chance to serve.
Uh, thank you so very much. I do want to check here, uh, fairly quickly before I make any comments with everyone, um, with the second round. Um, and, uh, I will start with Councilmember Mendoza.
No. Nope. No further questions. No further questions.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember LeBaron. No further questions or comments? Councilmembers, no?
No further questions?
And I was assuming you said that we had to say, right?
No further questions.
And I will say, um, to Mayor Pro Tem Gastel, thank you for your service and for filling the chair of Mayor Pro Tem. And filling in when we needed someone to run the meetings. Um, it is quite an honor to do so. But also to have you sit by my side. And yes, you know, while we are all here as elected officials, you know, we will have next week a minor shuffle of the chairs. And, um, the nameplates will be, um, rearranged just a little bit. But with the change, um, brings about a new opportunity and a new opportunity for us to embrace the upcoming year and to focus in on creating good, solid policy for the city and to continue with good financial management of the city tax dollars. And I believe that, um, as elected officials here, we're committed to doing just that. And so, uh, thank you. And next week, we will welcome our new Mayor Pro Tem, Jennifer Mendoza, and yes, we will vote him, it's coming, we do have a motion and a second. Again, the chair of the Mayor Pro Tem and, um, honor that you will serve, um, as our Mayor Pro Tem. And so we do have that, that motion and we do have that second, and I'll turn it over to our speaker to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank, thank you. Item number five is the appointment of the city council members to boards, commissions, and committees. I'll turn this over to our city manager, the mayor.
So on behalf of the mayor, I just wanted to say that attached to your agenda reports is the listing of the proposed calendar year for council members, um, boards and commissions in which the city, the city council serves on representing the city of Lemon Grove. There are no changes to the appointments, um, in '24, the same appointments exist for 2023. I do want to point out that Mayor Vasquez is recommending keeping, um, former council member Jerry Jones, or now resident Jerry Jones, uh, as the lead for the Metro J P A, um, while there continues to be some mentorship and some turnover of items for the, uh, alternate, alternate representative, which is Ms. Snow. With that, um, I will, uh, happy to answer any questions, although I did not make the appointments. And, um, uh, all we need to do is ratify the mayor's recommended approvals.
Uh, yes, before we get to that, um, what I do want to, um, make sure that we again with our city clerk to see if there are any speakers regarding this agenda item, and then we have John Elwood.
John Elwood. First, you're all getting assigned board meetings or some kind of meetings you're supposed to go to. We had a city councilman several years ago who was assigned to go to a board meeting. I went to the board meetings on my own, nobody made me go. He showed up twice. I will not put up with that. The city should not put up with that. If you're assigned a board meeting or some other meeting that you're supposed to go to, go to it. And be on time to every meeting you're supposed to go to. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so very much. Um, and I think that goes for everyone sitting here and not just one person. Uh, because there are some people here who have gone to maybe one meeting if that, um, regarding a board that they serve on. So, um, you know, I hope that everyone is listening to, um, the words that were shared. Uh, as it is very important that even if you can't go, there's always an alternate that can fill your seat. And, um, I will stress in this moment the importance of communicating with your alternate to make sure that there is someone sitting in the seat to represent Lemon Grove. One thing that I can say is, you know, sometimes life happens. And that is why we have alternates that can fill in when the primary cannot attend. But it is the responsibility of the person who is designated to be in that seat to ensure that there's always someone there regardless to the board or the commission. Um, so what I'll do is I will do two rounds of questions. And, um, we will have two questions per round. Of course, if you have comments, uh, save your comments for the second round. And I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
Well, I, you know, I, I called you last week because I, I wanted to talk about this specifically. And I, I appreciate you looking at, um, but our schedules just didn't allow us. Can't hear you. It's on. Our schedules did not allow us to, um, to have this discussion. So, um, there's no reason why I can't, you know. So my, um, my thought on this is, um, you know, looking at this list, like, and I, and I assume too, you didn't, you didn't really push this because you didn't make any changes. But I have some suggestions for changes. The Helix Water District, um, I think we've all read in the paper that, um, there, there have been some, there are going to be some big increases in water coming down the pipe. And you better believe that Helix is going to try to pass those on to, um, your customers, which include the people of Lemon Grove. I, Councilmember LeBaron, um, has, as far as I know, I've never heard a report on a single meeting that she's attended for the Helix Water District. So I'm suggesting that we put someone else on that committee who can, and maybe she just can't go to the meetings because she has a job. But, but we don't know because she doesn't share that with us. So I'm suggesting that we put someone on that, um, that board who will, you know, at least attend the meetings, you know, look at the agenda and attend the meetings where they're, um, talking about rate increases or anything that specifically affects people in Lemon Grove. Then, and I would be willing to serve on, on that board. I'm the only person here that, um, doesn't have a job, um, because I'm retired. So I, you know, I, I, I think I should probably be able, um, to attend those meetings, and I have attended them in the past. Um, and then the other thing is, I do think that, um, with, uh, with Sanday, I, I, it's my suggestion, if she has the time, that Councilmember Snow, um, be given an opportunity to serve on Sanday. I have not talked to her about this, so maybe she does not have the time or wish to serve on Sanday. Um, that would mean that, um, Councilmember Gastel or I would need to step off. And I don't know how, how he feels about that. Um, I'm, if, if he's, wants to, if Councilmember Snow can do it and he wants to step down, then we could bring her in third or as, as second alternate. Um, or I, I, you know, it wouldn't kill me to have, uh, Friday mornings, um, free. But again, I'm, I'm able to do it, um, and if I step down, so, I, again, I haven't talked to Councilmember Gastel about this, so this is, I just, I'm, I'm just opening that up for, for them to consider. Um, I could, uh, step down and Councilmember Gastel could maybe step up to alternate and Councilmember Snow to, um, to the second alternate. And keeping in mind, you know, you don't know, if, if you're a board, if, if, if you're an alternate, the board meetings are the second and fourth Fridays mornings of the month. And I block that out all the time because I, you know, I, uh, the mayor may be ill or, um, something comes up at work. I, I think I've only covered for her maybe three or four times all year. But I have to be prepared, I have to keep those mornings free. And then I'm also on the transportation committee and they meet on the first and third, um, Fridays of the month. So basically, every, if, if you agree to do this, it depends on what committee you end up on, um, George is on the planning committee and regional planning. And, um, so you just have to be prepared to have, you know, every Friday morning from nine o'clock till noon, um, you could be at, at a, at a meeting. And that's, that's a lot of, you know, I, I just have to keep. And that's, that's a lot of, you know, I just have to keep those blocked off, those Friday mornings, every Friday morning. So that's kind of, and that doesn't even include on Thursday, it really should be consult with Sandeg staff. They give us a briefing, a staff briefing on the meetings that we attend. So there, it is a pretty big time commitment, although the staff meetings, sometimes they're scheduled and sometimes you can just talk to the person on there. So those are my suggestions of moving things around a little bit. Otherwise, I'm fine with keeping things the way they were. And the other concern is, have we been going to East County Chamber meetings? I haven't heard Councilmember LaBaron report out on that. And I, and so maybe we should consider, those are on the first Friday of the month. So it would have to be somebody who's not going to Sandeg meeting. So, and I know George teaches on Fridays. So we need to just kind of keep those things in mind. It's not always, you know, negligence on our part. It's just that, you know, we have jobs or grandchildren that we pick up from school or we have other obligations.
Thank you. And there are competing priorities. Because from time to time, I'm on the League of California Cities Board. And so the meetings that I have with the league sometimes conflict with Sandeg. Though there will be times when an alternate will be required for Sandeg. And those League of California City meetings are often not local. They're either in Sacramento, Los Angeles, or any part of the state of California. So I just wanted to make everyone aware. Regarding your recommendation for Helix Water District, Councilmember Mendoza, you said primary, we would be willing to step up for that. And there's also an alternate spot, no changes? Just wanted to confirm. And then for Sandeg, your recommendation for first alternate was Gastel? And then Snow? Is that correct?
That's my suggestion.
Okay, that's your suggestion. And then for the East County Chamber, I don't have anything written here for primary or alternate. And I just wanted to, okay, thank you. So Miracle Tim Gastel will speak to the East County Chamber. But we'll wait just a little bit because of the order. And next is Councilmember LaBaron. But before we get to Councilmember LaBaron, I think that our city manager wanted to chime in.
Just a real quick, I looked very quickly on the East County Chamber of Commerce and their board meeting has changed to the last Thursday of the month from eight AM to nine thirty AM. So it's not on Fridays anymore. I think too many conflicts with Sandeg.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so very much. Next is Councilmember LaBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually think it's a great idea to assign somebody else, like partner Jennifer Mendoza, as first Helix Water District and then maybe the alternate. I think that's a fabulous idea. I'd be willing to go with that. And also, oh, and in regards to that, I'll just make sure. All right. You're drinking out, Ms. Mendoza? But I was, Councilmember Mendoza, I was saying that I think that it's a great idea that you step up as first Helix Water District and that I be the alternate. And just in regards to that, I'll just make sure that you and I have an open text card so that you and I can stay in communication because like you said, it's very important that, or like the mayor said, it's very important that when one of us is not able to make it, in the event that you cannot make it to one of the Helix Water District meetings, that you'd be able to text me and I'd be able to text you. And that you'd be able to be in communication so that I can step in. So I agree with Ms. Mendoza. That's a wonderful idea. I'll be there to support her in the event that she needs my support. Look forward to working with you and that and being in communication. Regarding the East County meetings, though George and I are both appointed to those, admittedly, it's been difficult for George and I to attend, as he said, he hasn't attended. So I think that maybe George, I want to say, I don't know, we'll see what you think, George, about it being on Thursday, eight to nine, if you want to discuss, maybe you lead first or me lead second. I'm open to whatever works, whatever you think works. I mean, kind of seems like it might be difficult for both of us, so that's why we're here in a partnership. So whatever works for you, George, let's talk about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Snow?
So I could do the second alternate position for Sandeg. For the Helix Water Authority, I just, I went through and took a look at who'd been attending and what happened. And there was a water increase this last year and Mark Grasik, who's on the water board, was gracious enough to come and give us a briefing on that. But I think it was a really sad opportunity that we didn't get to have the voice of Lemon Grove there at that meeting. And there hadn't been good communication. And so I would recommend that for the Helix Water Authority, that I be the alternate. And that, and I'm also on wastewater and the two kind of go hand in hand. And so I think that that makes sense. I'm also the alternate for the East County Economic Development Council. And so I think it would make sense for me to be on the East County Chamber of Commerce, particularly I'm really interested in promoting business and really want to work with Rick Wilson. I've talked to him a couple of times now and got great ideas for this, for the city. So I think being the alternate for either the primary or the alternate for the chamber works with my schedule.
So for clarification, I have you down for the ECEDC as an alternate. And for the East County Chamber, did you want to be considered for alternate or the primary?
Either one. Primary preferably, just because I want to really work with Rick Wilson to help our businesses. And for the community, Rick Wilson is the head of the East County Chamber of Commerce and he's got some great ideas.
Okay, thank you so very much. And, and next is Miracle Tim Gastel.
Thank you. Yeah, I, Jerry Jones used to be our East County Chamber person. And he recruited me to be alternate, I think probably before Allison was even on our radar. And you know what they say about good intentions. I think that, especially given that facilitating access to coordinated transportation, the transportation agency that our vice chair meets on the fourth Thursday. And I think that's probably going to usually be the same Thursdays as Chamber. I think it'd be good if I got off of the Chamber assignment altogether. And that, and I totally agree that Allison would be wonderful. There is, you tend to meet similar people in ECEDC and EC Chamber. There's quite a lot of overlap. And I'm a little sad that I can't take advantage of that. But the Chamber has lots of different events. And sometimes I make it to the other events, not other than their meetings. And on ECEDC, I was going to say that maybe Allison should be the lead. Because in the draft that I saw earlier, she wasn't the lead on anything. But, you know, it doesn't make that much difference because we both go to the meetings when we can. And, and so, so I'm fine to be, to be our lead or to be able to be on ECEDC. I'm not sure it makes a difference. And I absolutely love serving on MTS. I'm glad that that hasn't come up for debate in discussion. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I, I don't know if I'm the person that was mentioned earlier, but I did, when I first got on the council, I was appointed to be Helix Water Rep. And I remember a really cool tour of the Bay of the Delta is what I remember. Yeah, yeah, I remember a really awesome tour. And I remember getting off of that committee pretty quickly as soon as other things were available. And that's fine. And I'm really glad when other people are available to do various things. So, yeah, I think, speaking for myself, I think that I'm happy to be off the East County Chamber and either alternate or first is fine for the East County Economic Development Council. MTS is the most important thing that I do in this category, things that we've been talking about. And, yeah, I am active in Sandeg and I actually don't have a Friday classes scheduled next semester. So I'm going to say that I'm fine for being second alternative, if that's the wish of the body. I can tell you, I am on regional planning, but it's an MTS appointment to regional planning. And it, and, and it might be a fact that I'm not going to say. I don't know for sure. But I think I probably should stay on Sandeg. And in case anyone forgot, this might be on my tombstone. I did actually cast the most important vote in recent times in favor of the general plan when the first two alternates were conspicuously absent at the most important Sandeg meeting. So in case anyone forgot, thank you.
And for the East County Chamber, I have Snow as a primary. And I just wanted to check in regarding the alternate for the East County Chamber.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea that if she would like to be primary, like George said, we can all attend these meetings even if we're not the primary. So if she would like to be primary on that, by all means, I would like to be secondary on that one, on East County Chamber.
Thank you so very much. So I'll just run down the list here of what I have. I have Helix Water District, the primary Jennifer, Mendoza, and the alternate Allison Snow for Sandeg.
Madam Mayor, I don't agree with that. I'm on Helix Water Authority and I don't agree to being taken off of that. I'd like to discuss that further.
Okay, what I can do is just check with each of the councilmembers to see who you choose to serve as the alternate. It's either, for the alternate, it's either Snow or LaBaron. And I'll start with Mendoza, Snow or LaBaron.
Either one would be fine if Councilmember LaBaron will commit to actually going to these meetings. They're on the first, third, and fourth Wednesdays of the month at three PM. And you didn't go, I don't think you, I don't know how many meetings you got to, maybe one in the whole three years you've been assigned to this committee. So I don't feel that we can rely on you to attend these meetings. Three meetings a month is quite, is quite a commitment. So I just want to make sure that whoever is the alternate actually blocks that time off so they can attend.
If I can just have everyone chime in regarding Allison, Snow, or Leanna LaBaron for the alternate position. So I'm asking each person to choose one. And then that way, based on your choice, then that will determine who will serve in the alternate position. And so it's either Snow or it's LaBaron. And so if you can choose one, Councilmember Mendoza, that would be great.
Just to follow up what Mendoza was saying, I can come in to be the secondary. Secondary does not mean to be up there because of the primary. That is why I have been pulled to court as the primary because I wish, and like I said earlier, I would be a hundred percent permitted to be a reporter role to you in Helix Water position.
I'm so sorry, I'm going down the line right now and I'm asking people to just choose one. And that's it. So if we can go ahead and just go ahead and choose one, Councilmember Mendoza, your mic is on. Snow or LaBaron?
LaBaron.
Councilmember LaBaron?
Oh, me, like I said earlier, this is the third time. I think it's a great idea that if Jennifer would like to step up and be the leading role in that, I a hundred percent support that and I will be here every step of the way to be the secondary. In the event he cannot attend all those meetings, he can call me, text me, and we can talk about me filling in for her. It's an honor to serve on that board, so congratulations to you and me, Jennifer. So proceed.
Thank you. Councilmember Snow, Snow or LaBaron?
I'm okay with LaBaron.
Miracle Tim Gastel?
Yeah, I think it's fine. LaBaron for the alternate.
Thank you so very much. So we have for Helix Water District, the primary, Councilmember Mendoza, the alternate, Councilmember LaBaron. For Sandeg, I have for the first alternate, Miracle Tim Gastel. And for the second alternate, Councilmember Snow. For the East County Chamber, I have for the primary, Snow. For the alternate, LaBaron. And for the ECEDC, for the primary, Gastel. And for the alternate position, Snow. And that includes all of the changes that were discussed here tonight. And so, we need to vote? And I will second to approve. We have a motion and a second. Secretary Kirk to call the roll.
Councilmember? Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron?
Councilmember LaBaron, I'm super excited for the moves that we've made to encourage greater collaboration between all of us as colleagues. I look forward to working with Jennifer Mendoza on Helix Water Board and Ms. Snow on the East County Chamber. I vote yes.
Mayor Potem Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye. And I just have one thought. I just want to make sure staff lets all appropriate agencies know as soon as possible about the changes. Just so we can start getting current. Like, I'm already getting requests for meetings. Soon as they know that.
So yes, we will make sure, first of all, we'll finalize, I'll finalize this draft list and give you the new list with the changes on it. And then both between myself and Joelle will be able to contact the representatives of those particular groups so they get you back on the list or off the list so you get the agenda and the phone will be in your class.
And Mayor Vasquez?
Aye. Thank you. Councilmember meeting reports. This section of the meeting is dedicated to oral reports from the city council about meetings.